Uh, we'll call the meeting to order. First item is the consent agenda, is the minutes of the last meeting, the budget review, payment of bills.
I'm making work when we kept the minutes and pay the bills.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? Put them comment.
Jennifer, come.
We were just letting y'all know that we officially reactivated the Chamber of Commerce. Y'all need anything, it's reactive and ready to help. That's all, that was my whole comment.
Really, that's all?
That's all for me today, it's Tuesday.
But that's all, Greg.
I did, yeah.
Alright. First agenda item is, uh, discuss future plans for twenty seven point eight three three acres located at five eleven South Center. And nine thirty five South Center is requested by John Kendall. This one.
Uh, yeah, so we have a couple of printouts for you guys. Uh, we were here a couple of months ago, Natalie, John, my right, reached out to Somerville. Uh, about this project, uh, for high end RV park with some commercial retail at the front. Um, and then, and some self-storage. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we're proposing to add roughly twelve residential lots. Uh, we hear that there's, uh, some need for some residential lots. Um, so the idea is to initially activate those residential lots and as the market dictates, potentially build those houses. Or even sell those lots to individuals that want to, uh, build their own homes. Um, the intent is for the RV to be a high-end product where, uh, people staying will be, um, screened. Um, and, yeah, I mean, the idea is that this is a high-end, um, product, not what you typically see on some RVs. Uh, John is currently trying to, um, be part of several RV parks and all of them are trying to be on that high-end, uh, version of RV park. Um, so they've been out pretty good, their, their tenants, um, to ensure security for everybody. And then as, uh, they need start developing, then the likely the retail commercial in the front will, will develop probably.
Is there a reason he's not here tonight?
Well, he's part of Frisco Planning Zoning Commission, so.
He told me he would be, that's why that's.
Yeah, and, and he called me also kind of a last minute, cause he couldn't, uh, not be part of Planning Zoning Commission tonight. Uh, he is the chairman of the Planning Zoning Commission in Frisco. Uh, he couldn't, um, skip that meeting, so we're hearing John's behalf, if you guys have any questions.
Uh, so we do that in the residential lot.
Yes, sir. And my understanding is that John has been in contact with, uh, the property owner, it's about two acres where you see that. Uh, called aside with some of the residential lots about purchasing, uh, that property and nothing's been finalized, but my understanding is there have been conversations and the property owners open, uh, for potential sale. My understanding is also that John has been in contact with the old resident that boxing through those four residential lots in a row. Uh, and they've had discussions about the development as well.
Where does that, is that across from school?
Oh, okay, I got you.
We've talked about this a couple of times.
Yes, yes, there's been a lot of different things about that.
You are aware that it's your responsibility to acquire sewer and water to that location, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we understand that any extensions to services property will be, uh, developer's responsibility.
Perfect. And it would be one parcel taxed as one piece of property, correct?
Uh, yeah, so likely be one parcel except the residential lots, that will be individually by the lots.
Perfect.
And we haven't finalized the, the size of all these lots, but they're going to be roughly quarter of acre lots, roughly once we lay out all of them, except the residential lots.
The, the. Perfect.
Yes.
That big ditch.
That's what I think it is, that's what I was looking.
Yeah. That's the one.
The blue line right there?
Yeah.
Just the big ditch that runs back towards the sewer plant.
That's fifty inch, I know that our eight inch goes, sewer goes to the end.
Running through the residential.
Yeah. What kind of RV park is this? Is this something that's, you're, you're saying high-end, is it just, what is it? A daily, weekly, monthly?
Uh, no, it's likely going to be, um, kind of mid-term, I don't want to say long-term, but probably midterm, so between your three, two, maybe an average to three months to a year stay type. Uh, so it's not your nightly day in and out. Um, so it's again, and probably an average, it's just due to the pricing and the high-end of it is usually more for residents that want to stay there for not a long period of time, but maybe a mid-period of time rather than the in and out, nights in and out. So usually the customers that we see in this sub-product is more the expensive, high-end RVs and vehicles. Rather than the, the option.
They met with our, with the EDC.
Yes, sir.
Last month and, uh, EDC kind of liked it. That was the general feeling I got.
Yes.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we want to make sure that we partner with the city on this and that they're very supportive of it. Um, we run different scenarios on what we can possibly do with this group property and, uh, we think this is what. What we can do out here that we can also kind of partner with the city to not just support some of the needs on the residential side, but also dealing in the nearby future, some commercial retail, uh, as well. Um, we're going to scenarios potentially just doing residential in all of it and it's just with density in the home builders, that we, we couldn't get the numbers. But we think that this fund, um, should provide what we think will work best for everybody.
When we met with EDC, he didn't have these residential lots.
Right, and, and this is something, and I apologize if you measured it to perfection, they're probably not going to be great, I dropped it just on a computer last night as John was giving me a call, so. That's why you see the difference in graphics on everything but the residential, this is a quick hand sketch, but. There were some questions about drainage and about some deal, like, we're in the conceptual phase, we understand that once we go through the design, we have to bet all that out and. Design accordingly to do all standards and rules and, and make sure that, uh, all that is met and accounted for.
And our engineer will have to get involved, see if we have enough sewer to handle that.
Yeah, absolutely, like, we'll, we'll run the numbers and I, I'm an engineer by trade, so we'll run the numbers, we'll make sure that, that everything's designed to their standards, we'll work with the engineer, make sure that everything's. Uh, done as it's supposed to be per your code and, and specifications for sure.
What are you planning to do for your roots, concrete?
So what we were thinking was to do asphalt on most of it, except for the RV park, uh, we're thinking about crush concrete with the sealant. Because the RVs just over time kind of destroy it and this is a better way to be able to replace it and keep maintaining it as needed. Uh, would not go in with the expense of having to completely replace asphalt or concrete, which could be very expensive, so, uh, that's what we're trying to go with.
Did, when we talked with John about RVs. Uh, were these going to grant like permanent or temporary?
As far as the, 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 the longer versus short-term, yeah, so what, what I was mentioning earlier is that we typically see on, on what this product brings and. Due to the price point of it, it's usually not equipped in and outs. Uh, it's hard to control how much people can stay or not, but what we've seen is usually between the three to four month to a year threshold-ish. Uh, and we don't see much of the quick in and outs, night to just kind of pacify, um, yeah.
But you would, I mean, we have people come in weekends fishing tournament.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, at the end of the day, if they go through the paperwork and the screening, everything, I don't think there's a way to restrict them for necessarily not using your staying, but that's not what the expected user. Uh, common user would be, or what, what our expectation is.
What's, what's your estimated cost in this project?
Yeah, I don't know yet, um, and I'm sure John has some numbers in mind, I just don't know those numbers yet and I don't want to just hit something that may not be fully accurate, but.
What, did he tell us at that other meeting?
No. I didn't do it.
Are you going to allow anyone to like underpin their camper, like set up roots, put up a porch, things like that?
Um, I don't think so, uh, because this will not be for sale individually, so. Um, I don't think so, but I don't want to say absolutely no, I'll need to run that by John to make sure that, to get you an answer on that, but I don't believe that's sent to me.
I was thinking ten.
Except it's either eight or ten.
I think that's about what he's, was estimating, eight or ten million dollars.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that, for, for type of development decision, what we see, that, that, that feels alright, I just don't have the number for, I mean, to confirm what that would be.
Chief Wade, you have thoughts on, my biggest deal on RV parks is how you going to screen the people that are coming? Um, reason I ask is we got a solar farm here and they flooded our areas and they're paying these high dollar, uh, rental fees to park the RVs there and they're running rampages with thefts, drug and everything else.
Okay.
So people are going to be able to pay construction workers, not say anything bad about them, but.
Sure.
We're getting a lot of that type of stuff right now in RVs.
Understood, that's, that's good to know. What I can do is I could see if, if we can provide maybe the type of screen that we're on and if there's something that could be added in lieu to that, that the city would like to see or check. I'm sure that some of that could be investigated and potentially included in it. Um, but I'm sure that we can share some of that information, what we're looking for, uh, when that screening is done and make sure that you guys feel comfortable with that. Again, and potentially in addition to what you may want to see in there to make everybody comfortable for, for sure.
That portion of travel trailer will be a gate in.
Yes, sir.
Entrance.
Is, do you have any of these in other towns like this?
Uh, yeah, so right now, I'm personally working with John on about four or five deals on this, but I think yes, Ray, he told me he's either preliminarily or already finalized, he has about fourteen.
He doesn't have any that are already on the ground and up and running?
Not in this area, I think so.
That was my question, yeah. Because I'd like to see what kind of RVs come into these places, because you, you might have a brand new and then you may have one from the fifties. You know, I've, I've seen some of these places, what I'm saying, there's some over around Cedar Creek Lake now. I don't know, wh- what do you go to charge per lot? How much is it going to cost them to park that RV?
Yeah, well, I don't think that price point has been set yet, it's going to depend on, again, the, the cost of the development, so. Right, okay. We're looking at the, the overall cost of it to, to make sure that that's covered. Um, what I can do is maybe we can share some information, what we're expecting on a ballpark price point and, and share that with you all. That'll help.
Because I have seen some of these on, some of these, like, faces, same type thing. And the RVs that've been left have been abandoned because they weren't in good enough shape to cut to and pull them off. And I'm afraid that might be what our situation is going to end up on part of it.
Right.
And, and this is right across from our school. Um, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, uh.
And, and if there will be an RV that it's abandoned and plays, then, I mean.
Is that a gate?
The owner will get rid of that RV, right, because it's, it's a place that nobody's paying, uh, rent for that you cannot occupy with something else, so if, if there was an event and our RVs abandoned a place, it will be shipped off.
Well, and this may be different than a house.
Yes, sir.
An abandoned home here in town.
Yes, sir.
Pretty much.
But you just can't do anything with it for, takes about at least six months, two years to do anything with it.
Yeah, yeah, well, you, we will be renting the space essentially to park your vehicle, right, so in the event that the vehicle's abandoned, it's no different than a tow truck, right, so if we can get it off property, um.
Kind of to look at the other side of things, I've seen a lot of these that are really nice, there are a lot of snowbirds that may come south, this may be a place that. That works into something where they'll stop, where if there are more tournaments on the lake, if there are more things going on, I, they're nice places.
Well, I, I want to have a positive thought.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, but I'm just kind of.
And, and one thing he did tell us, this will be like a, it'll be maintained by them.
Yes, sir.
I mean, they will maintain the yards, the shrubs, everything will be.
Now, who, who he told you?
John.
When?
John is the money man.
Yes, John Kendall was part of the ownership group, I'm just representing John at this point, so they will be owning and oper- and operating, maintaining this property, yes.
Yeah, he's, he's on the Frisco Board of Zoning, that's why he's not here, they had a meeting tonight.
Yes, sir.
But, no, the company will maintain all the property.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, like a homeowners association, this, this, I'm just telling you what he told us last time.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of people, RVers won't come to a junky park.
Right.
They pull up and see junky park, they leave. Uh, most of them are kept pretty good.
A lot of, a lot of that has to do with price.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, he has that this is going to be a high-end, at, at the expectation will be a high-end, high price point location. To attract that type of customer.
You'll advertise?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
In, in national magazines, I mean, things like that, I mean, what, what, how would they know to come?
Yeah, I mean, there will be all advertisement, I don't know if, per se, like, national magazines.
But you know what I'm saying.
But, yeah, there will be advertisement to try to bring people into the development, into the community, uh.
Man, I can't remember yet, but I know we talked about being in the. Uh, Campgrounds of America and all that, those type organizations is where they advertise.
And that's why I was asking, I think a legitimate question, how much are you going to charge for one of these lots? Now, a man that's doing fourteen of these should know, I'm talking about within a hundred dollars each of how much he's going to charge for one of these places. Because if he's going to invest twelve million dollars, he's going to have seventy-four of these, he's got to know how much he's going to have to charge to ever pay for this place. That's, that was my question. That's why I'm, you're talking high-end, that's why I was asking, what is your high-end price? What are the high-end prices of one similar to this? Have y'all compared it? I'm just, I'm just trying to get there, I, you know, I don't see what we're doing.
I understand, is it four hundred nine or is it fifty dollars nine?
That's, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, and, and.
I don't think it'll be fifty.
I understand his side too, when they price all this out at the term of how long he's got to pay his no problem, I mean, what it's going to take to pay it.
Yeah.
But you also, you got retail space here at highway. I mean, you can get on there and. There's a lot of, a lot of factors in.
See what they are.
You sell these lots of these houses, you know, all that's going to contribute to, and the storage and.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can see why he can't nail down a price to you right now, I don't have any idea what an RV park.
We're paying, down on the coast, for, where, where Amy's at is four hundred and some dollars a month.
Oh, utilities included?
No.
All the, all the.
The, the water's included, but the electricity's not included. And then, then the one we had, uh, uh, in, uh, Gonzalez was around the same price, but I think everything was included there. I think it might have been a little more, maybe four fifty a month. But that's, that's the area I would look at, somewhere right in there for your monthlies and, uh, I don't know about the dailies and the weeklies and two or three days and. But I know one thing, you gotta, they're, they stay full. I mean, people come in and come out, they move, their jobs move, uh, just like. Just like these jobs will move from where all this solar stuff is going on, when these are done, they're going to move off and go work on solar places somewhere else.
Most expensive is getting to own a house, it may be cheaper to live in one of them.
Well, I'll tell you what, taxes are a heck of a lot cheaper. And I think a lot of people are going to RVs just because of that reason.
There are a lot of people now who can work from home and they just get an RV and they travel the country.
That's true.
And they work from home, so they'll stay here, I, I mean, I want to do that, but, um, so I think that, I, I just think that we would see, uh. I don't know, a better class of customer, that's what I'd hope, you know?
Yeah, that's what we would.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it's going to be up to the parks, who's, who's managing and running the park, because these parks will run your butt out of there if they don't like what you're doing.
Yeah.
They can tell you, get up, load up and go. It's, it's not like a, uh, an apartment house where somebody moves in and just stays there and don't pay and run it down, I mean, if you're, if you're not in compliance with what they, there are rules, they can tell you, pack it up and leave.
It's a major infrastructure investment.
Yes.
Because there's not sewer to that location.
Yeah.
They have to do that and that's a major infrastructure project that will be on the cost of the development. Um, there is water at that location, it's a six inch.
We have sewer run across the highway, sewer runs down to the camp, it's ball field, there's a manhole right there, but that was new sewer line put up there.
That's the one with the bad line down that, that Daniel's drive.
Yes, it's, there's, there's some major improvements to, to provide for this.
The what? Yeah, I know, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Um, there is a water line at that location. Six inch?
Eight.
Eight.
So there's water and sewer at that location, um, and if, if for any reason this doesn't work out, they can sell it for single-family housing.
Correct.
You said differently.
They've already got it started.
Yes, they, I mean, it's not the.
Will it be gated? Will there be security there?
Um.
At the gate or?
It will be gated, I do not know if there's going to be permanent security there, huh, uh, but it will be gated.
That's Marcus.
Yep.
That's new sewer run down the highway, old sewer where it goes down Daniel's Drive. We added that into Camp's Ballpark, to, to.
It goes all the way back to the middle of the ballpark.
Yeah.
But it all drains down Daniel's Drive and that's the one that has to be.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
Yeah, sewer actually runs down the property line right there.
That's what I thought, long, yeah, between them and camp.
Stops about right there in the middle.
To the middle, that's what I thought.
Yeah, one manhole back there.
Water, too, water actually runs up down, but we were in water up there too.
Yeah, water runs all the way to the greenhouse.
Water's good, sewer's question, but that'll be up to the engineer, there's, there's a old adage line across the, that group carries down Daniel's Drive to the sewer point.
So I know this is. A preliminary drawing, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Um, and since center is also a state highway, has there been thought of reaching out to the highway department to get started with entrances and?
Yeah, well, the, the first step was to meet with you all and make sure that we could come up with a product that will, uh, that we could partner with you all and serve, and serve the community that will work best for everybody, as soon as we get. At to a point that we are kind of in agreement with that, we'll start on preliminary drawings to get with your engineer. Uh, and then parallel to that or almost consequential, we'll begin, uh, conversations with, with the tax out or the highway department to make sure that everything's in line and meets. Not just the city criteria and go through your real engineer, but also through them as well. So, to answer your question, no, we haven't had that outreach, yes, it will happen sooner or later.
If you get TIA, have to be done probably and probably a turn lane and.
Yeah, so depending the volume, we, we may need to put eight, eight turn lane on one or both the driveways, right, once we, once we know what those numbers and loads are again, end up being correct.
Is this going to be built at stages or you going to build this whole thing off?
Yeah, so the idea is to build the RV park, the storage and the single-family lots within, let's call it the first stage. Uh, a- as we gauge the market, we may, we're, we will start constructing houses or if there are market for it, we will potentially sell the lots for somebody to build their own house. And as we start seeing the demand below, then we in the future will start with some of the retail at the front. Uh, the idea is to do the RV, the storage and the single-family lots, uh, on, at the initial base.
Or retail, would you go for?
Well, I think it's hard to tell right now, I think we might need to start figuring out what.
Well, I don't know, most of these.
What do we see the demand on?
Other places that already have.
Well, a lot of times what we see is we'll see like your retail, like mixed retail strip that you can have from four to. Eight tenants, or you can combine one or, or you can combine two units or one, and you can have for a restaurant to a local shop to, uh, a- a- anything that.
I didn't know if it would be like rebuilt, it'd be like office places or something like that, maybe?
Uh, and, and I don't know if there's a plan for office, but if there's a demand for office, then yeah, absolutely, that could be an option.
So are we need, anything?
No.
This is simply discussion.
Yeah, correct, we want to get your thoughts before moving forward to the next step, starting engaging with your engineer, um, starting engaging with the city to what the next steps are for development, I know, want to make sure that. We're starting the right track with this, but, uh, it doesn't run anything.
I, I do like the inclusion of the home sites, stick-built home sites, I wish the whole thing was, but we had quite a discussion on that in the economic development is. The cost, I mean, was, he had, I believe John had talked to a bunch of different home builders, D.O. Hart and all the. And there really wasn't enough for them to actually want to do the job and, you know, it's too small of a price.
Too small, yeah.
From this.
For a guy.
You know a guy. From, you know, several, several of those companies like D.O. Hart and he had talked to.
I can't see them doing something like this, that's, they do.
Several hundred.
Huge.
Yeah. And also to build them affordable for water sale here.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I like this.
Do, uh.
So I'm just, I'm guessing that if something, if something were to happen inside that, that area, it would be the Kern's Police Department's response or?
Yes.
Yeah?
Correct, so we'll party with, uh.
Like it always has been.
Correct, so we'll party with the city and a- any type of gate entrance, one oh will be coordinated with, uh, chief and, and fire department to ensure that they have access entrance and.
I'm sure that's something the fire department want to, would want to look at, especially on your roads and.
Yes, sir.
Getting in and out of there to be able to.
Turn space.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. All our roads will need their code, make sure their trucks can get in and out and, and they'll have access and opening and, um, and all those gates, they'll, they'll have access for emergency purposes. They could, they, they shouldn't be obstructed by it.
I mean, they're, right now, we're not showing any of the infrastructure water lines, fire hydrants.
Correct.
Yeah. What more information would y'all like? Specific information from which one? I know Greg said rental cost.
Correct, yeah, what I have in my list that we'll try to get to, you guys said examples of RV parks and what we ambition this to be, so it's easier to put. You know, actually what this would look like, uh, some price points and what we're thinking and then what, what the screening criteria will be, uh, true with the chief and, and. See that also buys or if there could be things that we can enhance there, uh, to help them that end. Those are three things that I have right now that we'll try to get to you guys as soon as we can.
I guess you'll have a thing like park rules, things like that.
Correct, yeah, like, like the HOA type rules and yes, yes.
See some of that kinda stuff too.
So these guys already got some of these parks other places. I might would like to see some pictures of those.
Sure, sure, we'll, we'll get you some examples and what, of what those are or what we ambition this to look like.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Alright, so we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you all, how are you doing?
Appreciate it.
Like it.
Thank you. Alright. Next item is, uh, discuss, discuss, consider the Amer- the Verac County Central appraisal, appraisal district budget for fiscal year ending twenty twenty six. I will tell y'all or remind y'all, we have never approved their budget.
It what?
It is, failed here every time.
Our cost share goes down a little bit based on these numbers.
Our what?
Our cost share.
Cost share.
Our cost goes down a smidge, but. Everyone's on it.
Yeah, one or five, whatever you hear.
Every two.
Or if they're bad.
Oh, is that, I think Darren just made a motion.
Yeah, I heard it.
I made a motion not to approve their budget.
Oh.
Not there again.
All in favor, by all. You know, if it costs two and a half million dollars to appraise property, I mean, really, two and a half million.
I don't see the expense.
And that comes out of.
Other than that big building.
That comes out of all our tax.
Yes, yes.
Alright.
I like it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Understand I.
Anytime I can.
We're wrong.
Uh, next item is discuss, consider updating the Kern's police department policies to maintain. TCOLE compliance as suggested by Chief Allen.
TCO is, uh, changing some of the rules on policy issues. Uh, one of them is gonna be your personnel files that I've, I've got to maintain. One, the other one's misconduct and hiring procedures. You are welcome to. Take a look at these. These are not an option. You don't have to vote on them. We've got to. I've got, and they're already in effect actually, so I just wanted to run them by, in case y'all want to look at them, uh, TCO is changing a lot of things and they're continuously changing and. Eventually they're just gonna pretty much take over their employee files. Uh, if, if there's misconduct or anything, I gotta report to TCO, my investigation and everything, and they kinda approve it or deny it. I deal. Uh, personnel files, which we went over this while back. I gotta have two separate files and they gotta be maintained and in certain order. I mean, the other one's just hiring procedures that we got to go through now and, uh. But it's all pretty self-explanatory. Go on, have a look at these or anything. That's their model policy. I just, I really wanna just take that one with it. It's just what they do.
We don't have to approve that.
Don't have to, you can, you don't have to.
Why don't we for the record?
You don't do?
I'll make a motion for it.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor. There you go. We go for, for the record.
Get those from Catherine, if she'll make them for an hour.
Next item. Discuss, consider budget requests for fiscal year ending twenty twenty six. Is that time again? So what we got?
I am requesting, um, a, an increase in salary for our employees. It averages to about two dollars per employee, per hour. Um, the cost of living has increased, all the costs of, um, supplies, food, electricity, everything is going up. And if you want a quality employee, you're gonna have to pay to keep a quality employee. We don't have a big turnover rate and that's very, something to be proud of. Um, and if we don't pay our employees properly, we will have a higher turnover rate. Um, so that's the, the biggest deal and then we have our.
We're in it pretty good. We actually don't have our final, uh, numbers in for the appraisal.
No, this is a request. These are just the things that, you know.
These are, these are just requests and they go either way when we get the final number. Uh, you said two dollars for our employees that include.
Yeah, that's kind of all across the board. I didn't know what Chief Bobby would like. I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Combs would like. Um, um. You know, that's kind of the, the general number that I had put in my spreadsheet across the board. Um. Uh, we will have to raise our water rates because of course can't raise theirs. They told us last year they're brought up fifty cents and then they told us that, you know, they're going up again in October of twenty twenty five. So we know that's coming, so we have to do that, but the cost of everything has increased. Chemicals, parts.
Pop.
Everything has gone up and, and you know it, you feel it at home too. Um, so be prepared for certain numbers to increase that typically don't increase every year.
And one other thing, our preliminary appraisal, uh, have increased three million dollars.
Yes, our, our. Appraisal district's values have gone up. That means that our tax rate is gonna go down. It, it, it's a horrible process, but, um, if that's how.
Cass and Nellie, two million of it is out there on the highway, two million plus. Sonic for those increases in that property.
As far as office goes, we, um, have been told that we need to update our computers again. It's been. Five, six years since we've in, purchased new computers for the office. Um. They just go out of date so fast, so that's one of the things that you'll see in later budget numbers. I'm really trying to get us on board with a better water software. That means people can pay and they don't have to pay a fee to pay with a card, debit card, credit card or anything. When they pay, it automatically hits our system the same. Within twenty-four hours, we see it, it's taken care of, it's done. We don't have to go. Pull a report, hand it to the clerk, her put it in the system, make sure everything's correct, do a deposit, then it comes back to me and then I have to put it in it as a journal entry to show that that credit card payment was received. It takes all of that guesswork and the possibility for that entry error away. Um, we've been on the same system since at least nineteen ninety. It's an outdated program. You can't pull a report that you don't have to manipulate to get the information you want. Um.
So when you looked at, will it also do if we go to automated, automated water meter reading?
Absolutely. They will do radio control, um, meter readings so that if we have some, a truck that just drives through the neighborhood, it would all automatically read their meters. And if they get a high reading, someone has a leak and it flags it in the system and it automatically sends an email to that designated address. This is also the software that I use for my general ledger, accounts payable, um, payroll, everything. It also has a code enforcement module. That if, if we chose to do that, I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to or that I'm asking for it, but any ordinance we have will be in there. Sergeant Lee or whoever, whoever we give access to can access that and if they write a citation, it's automatically gonna put them all together. It's gonna see all the notes, all the reports, all the letters, everything that's been sent to that person. It will be seen on the court side. So, I mean, it, it gives you a better bit of communication with technology between the courts, the police department, the water department.
How much is this for me?
I'm not a hundred percent sure yet. Um, the last time that I looked into it, it was reasonable. I haven't looked into it in probably eight to ten months, so I'm not gonna give you a number because I'm sure it's gone up. I'm, I'm just gonna, you know, it, it's not something that's a make or break thing for us. It's something that's on my wishlist that we really, really need to be. Cause if we ever wanna go to radio meters or, you know, the digital stuff that we don't have to have somebody go out and open up a meter and look at it and open up a meter, look at. It, it's the way to go.
It's, uh. Installing new computers, good time to do it. What about the police department computers? I didn't tell you.
I think we're gonna be able to make it one more year. The next budget year, we're gonna have to have new computers or it's, he says he thinks he can mill cars long enough. But when we upgrade, we're gonna have to do laptops and all, so. It's gonna hit pretty hard, so.
I didn't realize that that was something that we needed in the office until Tony told us a few months ago.
Which Windows or on Google?
Windows eleven is what everything's on. We only have one application that uses a server where everybody here can access it. And it's saved on a server. If this building burnt down and that server was gone, everything on that server is gone and that's the water system. Everything else is web-based, which is great. Because if this building burnt and Courtney be taken care of from home, she could do it. If I needed to make payroll from home, I can do it. Um, but water is not like that at this point. It's all saved on that server.
Yeah, and they use all your deposit history.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of an outdated technology because everything else is going web-based. It's just something to think about and I'll try to have a better number for you and if they give me a number, I may be able to email it to you.
I mean, from a business side of it, I think we have to do things that makes things run easier and smoother.
Oh, it makes the general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, it changes everything. Right now, any kind of adjustments that I have have to be done manually. Um, I have to do some crazy things to make sure that KCBC, we collect sanitation, KCBC. Street fund. We have so many different things that are collected underwater, but they're not water fund funds. They go to a different fund, KCBC, streets or whatever. So I have to make sure that all of these things process like a due to, street, due from, general plug. It, it's a little bit of a, a, a paperwork nightmare for me. And once we get those systems that are all working together and the cogs are working, it's gonna make everything smoother for everybody. They also offer permitting software because the permitting software I use is in. It's Microsoft Access. Have y'all heard of that?
Microsoft Access?
Yeah, you still use it? It's outdated, if you don't know.
Yeah. That hadn't been around in fifteen years.
Yeah, they're about to stop supporting it. And that's why I keep my old computers only because of building permits. And I'm not asking for that just yet, but it's gonna come. It's in the pipe. Um, so be prepared for that. But all of this entire company offers all of the municipal software that you need to coordinate and give access everywhere. If Bobby Lee has a, a question, if we gave a roofing permit, he can look in that software and see it.
Yeah.
So it, 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 it would be beneficial all across the board.
What, what do you want, Marcus?
No, you're not getting a brush truck.
He's asked for it for ten years. I don't know if it's ever gonna come.
It's still running.
Just need raises and we'll be over. No, quickly this year. You already agreed for sewer change.
The eel, yeah.
What about you, Ivy?
Oh, I'm, I'm not asking for anything this year really. Uh, I need to go up on our training budget a thousand dollars for five thousand, six thousand. September starts our training cycle over again and twenty twenty six, we have to get training costing. Got a lot of mandated stuff we gotta get cleared out. I got two major schools I've got to go to, so I'd like to raise that from five to six if we're good. Uh, I'm good with the, the, I was gonna hit y'all up for a two dollar an hour raise for the officers. Uh, I didn't get raised last year. I'd like to get one this year for good. Uh, other than that, that's, uh, basically it.
Really, y'all, y'all aren't asking for anything?
We're, we're good right now. Next year, we're gonna come in for, and next year can be rough.
Just, just remember, it's gotta fit in the budget.
Maybe we should start.
Might not be as rough as Spagety, is it?
I'll tell y'all, next year, uh, I'm gonna just bring up since we're off that budget, we, and I don't like to talk about this subject, but we're gonna have to get another vehicle for it. Levi's Tahoe's got a hundred thirty thousand miles on it. Uh, I'm trying to look for some donations. I told Jeff, uh, owners of the actual. Project owners of Silver Farm has reached out. They're setting a meeting with me and the main contractors out there and I'm gonna hit them up. I'm getting a proposal together of what it's gonna cost to get a new Tahoe. The not, the owners agreed to a donation. I don't know how much yet, but, uh, the, the contractors out there, they said whatever the owners will give y'all, uh, we will match it, so.
Wow.
I don't know what it's gonna be, but I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping. But I've got invoice from, uh, Reliable Chevrolet, uh, for the Tahoe, new Tahoe's about sixty-two thousand, just plain Jane. The outfit, it's about eighteen thousand. So I'm gonna hit them that on.
I'm gonna hit them hard.
Is there, um, a reason that they would do a big donation since they're not in the city?
They, I, I've kinda injected myself out there to do this. Uh, they just, they won't be involved. They, you know, they told me, you know, anytime we have city events, they can loan us some of their people to help out. Uh, stuff like that, so, but they're, they're, they seem interested in donating, so.
They're completely different from the way you said.
No, yeah, this is, yes, yeah. Uh, honestly, I was gonna pass on this to the. Help the baseball people, but I, I need help in my business, so I'm being selfish on this. I am, I know, I, we've got some big events and stuff coming up next year, so. We've got some big events and stuff coming up next year, so. Computers alone. You're looking at pushing fifteen point a gram.
Did you get the license plate, what, camera?
Yes, sir, yeah. Oh, I forgot, the LPRs are up and running. They gave us two months, but they weren't just working right, so we couldn't figure them out. We made some calls. We got a little meeting with them tomorrow, a little Zoom deal, and they got to go in, activate some stuff that we were hoping for, like the minor stuff, like registration, no insurance, all that kinda stuff. But they read every license plate, they catalog it and everything, say of course. It's been doing really good. I believe that'll help our revenue though. You know, it's supposed to let mine stuff, but I got a donation from the One Hundred Club for thirty-eight hundred dollars. I I just gave a check to them, I don't know, a month or so ago, and that'll cover our first year if we decide to go with it. So first year, so basically two thousand twenty-six we take for.
One other thing is, we got two guys who are probably gonna retire here in a year or two. Marcus and Armando. And I kinda wanna know what y'all thoughts about going ahead and putting money in the budget to add another employee.
Just don't let them go. Just don't let them go.
I might fire him tomorrow.
Well, get get that guy in here.
I fire him at least once a week. And, you know, that doesn't necessarily have to be for a full year. It could be a half year starting salary or maybe something before we gain, as we go along, we can talk about it more, but just think that it's.
I'll say they have more knowledge together than one person can handle.
I'm just gonna say they remember more. I'm not gonna use the word.
Oh, I'm gonna say knowledge, because when they leave, you're gonna wanna call them to consult, so get that in your contract budget too.
Any other budget questions? If not, we'll move into operations. Code enforcement, you got your report from Bobby Lee. Flotation device on a lawnmower.
These reports don't show that Milton moved. These reports don't show that Milton moved certain lots. That line item, this guy.
You do not talk about this, this code stuff, you know, we we got Tim Melton, Tim Milton Boeing. We, I think we need to come together and agree on how we we really wanna do it, because, you know, I've got, I've changed Bobby to, you know, as long as weather permitting, give him Pickle ten days to take care of it, and then after that, we send him to mow it. That's how most towns do it. He was waiting till it gets well and up there, about thirty days before. I didn't like that. I think, you know, I think ten days is plenty of time to give somebody to take care of business. Also, we're, you know, it's costing, costing us a lot to do that, so.
And, you know, we don't, we didn't have, we don't have a line item in the budget for mowing. That'll be, we're gonna have to add that in next year. Mowing or demolition or.
Don't we back charge that to the customer?
What we do, but that drag down the process.
And and currently, our water and sewer department do all the work on on any kinda demo or any any mow. In the past, like Curtis' mows, that's a different department. It's not the police department. So if another person, if I put a lien on that property based on these code enforcement issues, the only person who knows who truly should collect that money from a lien and when the property sells is me. If somebody else came in, they'd be like, oh, who gets this money? It's probably code enforcement or whatever, because they did all this work. No, it is our water and sewer maintenance department that are actually out there tearing down the house, using their equipment. That's who does the work, so in in reality, they should be billing police department for certain labor actions. So if there's a line item for that, when we get a check for a lien release where somebody sells their property and they're paying that debt to the city, it it can be very clear that it goes to code enforcement. That it goes in back to police department. And I think that that just makes everything a little bit clearer for everybody on where money should go and where expenses are.
And one other thing, we get him to mow the first time. I mean, most of these lots are overgrown, brush, some of them have concrete bricks. When he comes in, we clean it, then we can mow it.
But I think that adds a big workload for a big guy.
If he gets it cleaned up the first time, then we can take it after that.
It's not too much of a workload?
No. We always mowed them well, but it got to the point where they were such bad shape, we would tear hard whipping it up.
Cause I think we got a bunch coming.
No, once he gets them cleaned up, where we know we ain't gonna tear nothing up, just buzz them down and go.
You know, if we can't mow with a mower, we can mow with a trailer.
He just gets that initial cleanup done, gets the hazards out of the way.
And I talked to him, he's, when he cleans them, he's gonna scalpel them, haul everything off, you know.
I've asked about citation. At least they'll get their certified letter first. Because the apartments will not get theirs.
Okay, what do you mean citation? If it's overgrown, they have mowed? That's what we were talking about just then, is that that prolongs the process.
I understand, but it gives them an opportunity to do it before we have to pay somebody to do it, which is a an expense that we don't need to spend.
How long does that, just say we go to this property? And you have to give them ten days, right? They don't, you have to, the citation.
He can mail a citation or anything, that's kinda being hard, but.
Give them ten days on that. Because the apartments, the only thing that I have a question about is the crossing at Oak Grove, the apartments by the school the other day. Their grass was very, very tall. It it needed to be mowed. It was bad. The city paid Tim Milton to take care of it because it was out of control, but the apartments hadn't received their certified letter from Bobby Lee yet. So they didn't know that the city had mowed it. They assumed that it was their contractor that did it. So I'm, my request is that either, if there's no citation issue, at least let them get their certified letters and have an opportunity to respond before we pay somebody outside to do that. And that's just being responsible with public funds.
Well, I can understand that.
Yeah, I just didn't believe, hell, he's been messing with that place for a long time. I figured they'd receive, they didn't receive it.
Nope. It was mowed three days before they got their certified letter.
Man, I wouldn't believe it. I did have that phone. Cause I kept asking them. If I drive around my check or something, I'll ask them about a certain place. Give you an update on it, I'd be real happy to have that letter here.
I mean, it's something that we need. That's something that we need. I I get it. It's just, let them get it first.
Soon as luck, Bobby Lee, you need to work a little bit closer trying, when he writes it and before Tim is sent, and make sure they get their letter and that.
Y'all are just gonna have to be a little bit patient, a little more patient. I mean, cause it's it's gonna grow up and it's gonna take long.
When did Tim start doing this?
Oh. You asked him last month, two months ago?
Two months ago, I asked y'all and y'all agreed, so.
We had that, I think he started with that Robert Self lot up on.
Break.
Yeah, way up there.
Yeah.
But there was, your porch left and, I mean, he was mad.
It'll all work out. We just now start to do something, we didn't even have done work flow out.
But we actually have more. It actually takes more labor for us to go in there and clean it completely off. Then mow it, then he does for us just mow it, everybody else cleans it off.
Yeah.
We're pulling two guys or three guys out to go clean it, and then you only got one guy that's gonna go mow it every gets cleaned. It works out better for us. Any more questions on code enforcement? Water department? Nick and water. Yeah. I actually got to go out and play in the water with Marcus last weekend.
You were already out there?
My skis were this big at night. I just see these during the day, or at night they're this big around the water loop.
Yeah, they're they're bad.
And the tower full of water.
Sewer department. Did we order the sewer machine?
Not yet.
We're gonna put it in this budget or you gonna wait till the next one?
I'll tell them to go ahead and order it.
Yeah, we just hadn't had time to.
Okay.
Sit down. Watch the buttons, I guess.
Uh, street department. I would imagine, when it quits raining, we'll be ordering several loads.
I ordered two weeks ago and can't get it. They can't make it, but they can't get to the two.
Can't get what?
They can't get to the materials. But as soon as he can, his first batch is coming here.
I'm sure it will last several.
Yeah, it's gonna be a load in one day.
Something something else we need, we need to look at is some of these culverts on the corners that are gapped out.
One other thing is the trash truck is destroying faster than we can do anything with them.
I believe, I believe that too.
That Tangle axle truck is ruining them.
I believe it.
I mean, we followed him around the other day, last week, and he got two of them and just smashed them to nothing. And it ain't that he's doing anything wrong, he's too heavy. He's just too heavy for the culvert. You got two sets of axles slide, that person's pushing all the asphalt up in a pile.
Yeah.
And we've got some of those old concrete culverts that the last one on the end is separate.
You got gaps, you know.
Going there by your house, that's all we had.
Yeah, one there and one on, that one person walking and.
Bonner and uh, Bonner's second, I believe you got one pulling apart right now.
We'll get. On the streets, when it quit raining, uh, police department.
Uh, we had seventeen report worthy calls in May. We only had one physical assault, which is good, which is a good thing. We had one burglary. And we did have a death investigation we had, which was a very interesting story. I wanna go see it, but. Nothing major, no major, no major crime. Best of it's just criminal trespass and it was stuff, nothing, nothing major. We'll, police, oh, I did, I couldn't remember if this had to be a gender odd or not. Mr. Brumming at school, Brad, they hit me up to ask y'all. They wanna have a pep rally this year downtown Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, from six feet to nine feet. They wanted to see if that might be okay this year to have that for homecoming. And then Saturday, the twenty-seventh, during the homecoming parade, they wanna have boot trucks set up in front of Kisa. And it'll go on till about two o'clock, but I I told them I couldn't remember if I need to, if something I need to vote on.
We usually do one general straight closure, we can add that in, but it needs to be on the record, we'll add it in the.
I just, I just, I didn't remember if y'all had to vote on it or not. I just told them I'd ask. I said, I don't imagine it'll be an issue. I think the boot trucks are gonna go on the Kisa side there Saturday, and it'll kinda go on to about two p.m.
Did they do it last year?
It's been done in the past.
Did they do them last year or something?
Well, yeah, but I think they're adding to it this year.
Core. No animals thrown, any animals, any animals.
Grounded.
Huh?
Grounded. Floated all the dogs away.
I'll tell ya, luckily, we ain't. There ain't been, I mean, they're taking dogs off, but it's we ain't been able to handle.
Any updates on where we can take them?
Man, I've tried. I I found a place that they said we could take them up in Dallas, but I'm, it's, that's too far. You're talking about a four hour trip just to take a dog.
It's gonna be high too.
Huh?
It's gonna be high too, right?
It's gonna be, yeah, it's high, it's real high. I I don't know what to do. I like to, I continuously, you know, if I think somewhere to check, I'll call and check. There's just nowhere to take them from.
It's not bad right now, though.
No, they're, it's really not, but.
Yeah, cool.
I don't have anything new to report. They're going to, hopefully they'll have court someday in July. There were a total of ninety-nine citations issued in May. Total collections, equal nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars even. That's an average number for court. There were no jury trials or hearings on it on, in that month, but, you know, as far as ninety-nine citations issued, I think that that's definitely on the incline from where we have been in the past.
Where are you getting your numbers? I got one of six.
It, that may not be issued with currents, that may be people that were arrested or filed at JP. This is the stuff that's filed, class C.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, I haven't got a new report. Last month, after the meeting, I did receive the report that we had, we were at eighty-nine percent collective for the year.
Uh, office.
Um, nothing need to report. Everything is running swimmingly.
Everything is swimmingly right now. Uh, grants.
Mayor Saunders can give you that update.
Never build it, never repair water tower, just buy a new one somewhere else. If you haven't noticed, we have a logo painted on the tower now. Finished that last week. Uh, Friday, well, Thursday, we proceeded to fill the tower for, because it's been sanitized, we'd fill it to water, we'd get full level for Skoda, run to overflow. Uh, we couldn't get the valve open. Finally figured out the next day after we called the valve company, they repaired the diaphragm valve, that the Skoda people had hooked the wires up backwards. Where it's normally open, they had it normally closed.
He fixed that though, right?
Didn't ask me to, didn't ask me to if I'd changed the wires. But we we did fill it Friday, overflowed it, got our top reading. It just gets better. Meantime, Saturday, the guy that's doing the, finishing the painting and the work on this zone, that will be painting the other water tower. Uh, was looking around the Nora Tower, opened the hatch, there's no ladder on the inside. We've gotta add a ladder to the inside. And when we overflowed this one, we found several joints of pipe that were never welded, they were just tacked together on the overflow. And when we overflowed this one, we found several joints of pipe that were never welded. They were just tacked together on the overflow that comes all the way to the ground. That'll have to be affixed. Uh, the other north tower will be an inside painting and outside painting. I thought it was just the inside. There's money in that budget that, for removing cables and antennas and all that other stuff that was done for by, uh, Sheriff's Department and the cable companies that I think will pay for the ladder that will be able to be inside. So, we shouldn't be out getting money there. Then, uh, once they fill the tower, we did on Friday, over here, we have to sample it for bacteria, Bactee is what they call it. Uh, so the contractor's supposed to take care of that testing. And Monday, they had the painter go to Dollar General, buy a jug, put some water in it, brought it up here, send it tested. Well, that's not how it works.
You should not have poured it out. Thank you.
Yeah, I poured it out to say it looked like a urine sample, so nobody really needed to see it. Uh, you know, it's sterilized jug. It goes in sterile where you take it. Uh, but actually the company, we sent our water samples to Valcium Cave and allegedly came today. But we did, uh, yesterday flow quite a bit of water out of it, Marcus and Armando did to, uh, cause all they got was the brush that's in that new pipe that goes up center. So, they ran it till we got clear water. I hope they did that before they took the sample today. May get that sample back tomorrow from what I understand, what Kathy told me. It may be here in two days. Uh, and then when, uh, we're clear, we're ready to go. But in the meantime, the Skoda company had also, there's no manual control valve out there to turn the car's kind of water on. I mean, like electronically, you switch a switch. It's on the computer screen. Well, when they reprogrammed everything, they left that off. Uh, so we got pretty low in the ground storage tank. Sunday? Yeah. Gotta hold all them Sunday. They got that fixed. Uh, I think about all, they gotta weld those joints of pipe up on that overflow and build the splash pad, um, where the overflow hits ground. But I think everything is, we're getting close.
What all do we have to have to be online? Just that sample?
It's it. That Bactee sample is it. Nunchlorine doesn't matter. It's just that Bactee sample. Uh.
And then we can work the other one down?
Yeah, we'll start working the other one down pretty quickly. Uh, but, you know, we was talking about loading the water trucks. I, I just don't think there's room over there. I think it's kind of a, be kind of a hazard. So, I think we'll take it down as low as we can get it, then we'll just have to let it run.
That one, remember it goes in and out same way.
Yeah, but, but I mean, though, when we get out to it.
Just turn your set points down?
Yeah. But we wouldn't drain that tower with the water, uh, fire hydrant, right? So, that's planned.
So, we're close.
E D C, K C D C.
E D C meets July twenty-first.
Yeah, we met in May, that last month, after our meeting. K C D C, uh, in the ordinance where K C D C was created, it says that all the expenses has to be approved by the council. K C D C gets roughly three hundred dollars a month off the water bill, uh, charge, purification charge. Rest of their money is all done fundraising. It's a pain to come here every time you need twenty dollars, you know, approved. I, when you're doing a project, which we're too late to do this. Of course, everybody knows we're having our big Fourth of July. But my thoughts on this is that when we, they start a project, they bring us a budget for that project. And as long as they stay in the parameters of that budget, what they expense, that we approve at one time. You know, the bookkeeping is still done here. I mean, it still goes through the city. I, I'm just trying to simplify that process to where they can get on with their projects, but not have to wait every month to come ask for permission to spend the money. So, if we get them to do a budget for each project, we approve the budget. They're good to go till the end of that project. And they'll be represented by the president of that committee at our meetings.
I think that's a great idea. You know, whatever the project is, get the proposal, get the, um, you know, whatever the budget that they're wanting to do for the project still needs to be approved by you, but, you know, give you the project they're wanting to do and a budget that they have in mind.
You, and you just have to make one approved.
Yes.
You approve the project and the budget.
I think that would be a fabulous idea.
And also, uh, they'll be required, just like, uh,